2020, we are here for a board workshop for legislative priorities. Ms. Fisher is running a little behind and Ms. Getting all my people straight, sorry. Ms. Patrica will be on the phone. Ms. Vaughn will not be attending this meeting.
No, I'm here.
Oh, okay, thank you from above. Ms. Vaughn is with us?
I know.
Thank you. And so today, we're going to start off with, we're going to let our Capitol Strategies begin this conversation and we will see where we go from there. I have Ms. Carol Green and Ms. Ashley Stace will be here to start the presentation. Thank you for being here today.
By all means, thank you. Thank you for inviting us to speak on this important topic, which is certainly very timely. And I have a few comments that I'd like to make before we get into the actual discussion, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
I have a few, too, to add to some of the things that I have. I think it's not, it's not a secret to any of you that we still have a lot of unknowns, not just with the COVID in general, but unknowns when it comes to anything that we're doing in regards to legislative agendas that we're taking forward, in regards to Tallahassee in general. Right now, the biggest advice we are giving everybody is all of your planning needs to be done in pencil, no ink, because we're continuing to change almost on a daily basis with everything that's going on. We're not sure at this point with the research and the reaching out that we have done, we're not sure at this point exactly how they're even going to handle anybody face-to-face in Tallahassee because of the fact that, you know, just if you just think about the elevators, there's only eight elevators into the tower. And if you social distance, that means about four people. Now, you've all been to Tallahassee. You know that there's usually 12 people in the elevator on top of each other, literally, because of the fact that there's just so few elevators. So the social distancing is going to become a big issue. It's a big issue for them to discuss even when it comes to the legislators themselves in the chamber, not the Senate so much, but the House because of so many members. So they're also talking about the staggering of committee weeks. That's a rumor that we've been hearing, too, is that they would start staggering things so that there wouldn't be as many people potentially there. That would be a nightmare, in my personal opinion, but that's one thing they are talking about. So with that being said, all of us need to focus on the fact that this is really a boots-on-the-ground locally for us to be able to deal with most of these issues, is to try and make those appointments and do that here, right here.
Now, and now.
And now. So I have reached out to Spencer specifically because he is Representative Roach, is the chairman of the local delegation. So he and I have had a conversation in that regard. He is available to speak with us at any time. Obviously, we're not going to be speaking to anyone until we have an opportunity to put this legislative platform together in the direction that you all will give us to be able to do that. The, we're talking about the unknowns, but let's talk about the knowns because we do have things that we do know. We do know that organizational will be on November 17th. That's required by the Constitution. That's already set. There's no wiggle room there that anybody would embrace. Committee weeks will start in December because Thanksgiving comes late and then we'll get into December. So there will be committee meetings in September, excuse me, in December. Session does start on March 2nd. There'll be committee meetings in January and February and probably several. Sunny Day, I always like to look at Sunny Day. That's kind of, is April 30th, so we do know that. The other thing that we do know is that the effects of COVID will loom over every budget and policy decision and debate that happens during this session. So we do know that, that's just going to, it's going to be there. You want to call it the elephant in the room, you want to call, whatever, the gorilla in the room, whatever, it's going to be there and it's going to take a place in every debate. The agencies have already been working on their budgets for the, on behalf of the governor, and they've already been asked to slice 8.5% off from last year. That is probably going to change, too. The governor's budget recommendations will be out probably in February. So that's why they're working on those right now, they, you know, to get through the process of being able to do it, get it to the governor, have the governor's staff go through it. So all of that's going to happen. I'm already hearing from leadership and reading between the lines that they are expecting deep budget cuts this year and that it'll be an austerity budget when it comes out because right now, they're believing that it's going to take three to four years to get back to where we were. So with that being said, the only thing that they can do is start making those cuts now out of necessity, frankly. Obviously, we all know that this has had a massive financial hit to our state because of our tax structure in the state and because of the fact that the snowbirds are gone, the fact that tourism is such a leading gift, if you will, to our state. So that being said, we are going to have to really, excuse me, pay attention to what's happening from a financial fiscal standpoint. We also know that when we start looking at the races that we have locally, which is important to us from our legislative standpoint, we do know that Spencer has a race. Everybody has a race except for Ms. Pasadomo. She's the only one that's already elected. And of course, she's in a leadership role in the Senate and she has been a friend. So it is someone that we all interact with and she's been a friend of ours and of yours for a very long time. The other races that are still kind of up in the air, of course, Spencer's race is looking pretty good for him. Jenna, Adam, Mike, and Ray are going to essentially be new members, even though Ray's not really a new member, he's moving into a new role. So consequently, those are people that we're going to want to reach out to as soon as we have a legislative platform put together. As always, with the legislative platform that you have in front of you, the draft that you have in front of you, I think we also have to keep in mind that there are pieces of this that are priorities for the state. So we have a lot of partners. Unfortunately, we've been able to interact with many of them, their lobbyists, and be able to make sure we're on the same page with some of them. There's also local initiatives that we need to look at. Do you have other things you'd like to add, Ashley? With that being said, Ms. Jordan, would you like to just start through the draft list that we have unless you have other questions, unless you have questions about something I've said?
Okay. Are there any questions at this point? Okay. So then I think everyone has the legislative priorities and the first one on that, if we'll just go through, through this list and then that way, if we have questions, we can discuss that, is accountability. And we put, all, these came together, all of these priorities came from a lot of the board members, staff, the district. So that's where we came up with this list. And the accountability is to continue the state assessment in order to gauge progress monitor for students while holding district harmless by suspending school grades, holding teachers harmless by deferring VAM, and holding students harmless by eliminating the requirements that at the end of the course exam count as 30% of the final course grade. The timeframe is a period of one year. Implement a one-year moratorium on the new benchmark for excellent student thinking, best standards, so teachers and district personnel can focus on supporting current student needs. Do we have any discussion on this, please? Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so I know you've talked to other people in the state about where the state is going. Are you hearing anything from the Superintendent's Association, from PTAs, from any of the organizations who would be involved in education about where they are on this whole thing of assessment and, you know, dropping the requirements for a period of one year? Or is this strictly a conversation happening right here just amongst us?
I think it's specific to the groups that you've mentioned, no. However, we do believe that there's a groundswell of this that's happening throughout the state through the other contacts that we have. I believe, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have that, I, oh, look, but I don't think I have that note with me, but I think Mr. Corcoran even has been coming out and making similar statements about that. Oh, I have it here. Excuse me, I do have, this is strict, straight from, excuse me, Mr. Corcoran, and he said that, that, hold on just a second, excuse me. This is about the full funding for students regardless of whether they attended online or campus, sorry. And they, he didn't say about that. I'm sorry, this is about the district funding for the students.
Okay.
I apologize, it's different, it's a different issue.
The reason I ask the question is, you know, to what extent is this something we need to flesh out locally or wait and see if there's some sort of, you know, statewide initiative that we essentially jump on, you know? I don't know if that's how things work, just.
I believe that it's, I believe this is such a statewide issue that that's what we should do, is jump on it from a statewide perspective and reach out to other school boards, lobbyists, et cetera. You know, I don't think it's a problem really to reach out to Mr. Oliva. I know that Dr. Atkins and all, we all have a good relationship there. To be able to reach out and do that is a much better way of handling it.
Yes, and I do believe this has been coming up in conversations with the FSBA as well. So this definitely would be a statewide issue, which we would have more traction on, for sure.
I mean, honestly, I mean, our, go ahead.
No, no, you go, Dr. Atkins.
I just think as we're reopening schools, you know, our primary focus right now is the safety and security of our students. That is really what, what our driving force should be. And I hate to characterize academics as secondary, but, but the safety and security of students is number one as we're getting used to really a new way of educating students. I do have, as I know, the commissioner has a very similar concern about a lot of our fragile learners. And right now, we see many of them in remote environments and I think that, that this is where we're doing our most learning instructionally, but we have certainly not caught up to the face-to-face. I have real grave concerns about if we go grading and then we have the fallout of grading and all of that, those implications that I think really put a lot of pressure on our school leaders and teachers at a time where they really need to be focused on doing truly what's best for kids.
Yes, absolutely. I just, I don't, I don't find in my mind any piece of that that says this isn't something that everybody should embrace.
Okay.
You know, and you talk about, and we're sharing notes here, but mental health, underlying of mental health.
Especially kids that are still at home.
Absolutely.
And with their friends and not socializing.
A huge, it's a huge issue.
It really is. And I think, and I think that, that this is something that is very easy to explain and for the average person to grasp a hold of and go, yeah, this is the way it's going, this is, this is only, this is the only right way to do this.
Okay, Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. I believe that this is the most important item on our platform because of exactly what Dr. Atkins just said. In my conversations with teachers, they have expressed concern about the impact on their performance based on the year-end test. And I told them that's where you need to trust up to advocate to do what's right, not just for the kids, but for you as well. When I spoke with Chancellor Oliva about this, he said that the Department of Education would not be holding up harmless, so to speak, with regards to the testing because we have time to bring this to the legislature. You know, in the fourth quarter shutdown, there was no legislative session and so it was the appropriate role of the DOE to exempt them from those laws. But now we have the opportunity to sit with our legislators, talk to them about this and not just from a school board perspective, but from an FSBA perspective. I will repeat, I believe this is the most important item on our legislative platform. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Well, I'm just thinking that since safety and security, as a superintendent said, is our most important thing right now, that's just more fodder and more proof to say we're focusing on this, so you need to let us go a little bit on the other one. So it's just more proof for the fact that we can't do it all at the same time. And the mental health piece is super important, so.
Ms. Vaughn, do you have any comments or Ms. Javonelli?
Not this time.
Thank you.
No, I would actually agree, so, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Gittens?
And I just have one more thing. When I, when I look at this and these exams and all of that, the first thing I think about is the achievement gap. And this is, if we want to just throw a grenade in it and make it, you know, 10 times wider, then keep up with this because these students have not had the opportunity to keep up academically, to have time to catch up academically, so, that's my point.
Dr. Atkins, may I ask you, and I apologize, I didn't ask you, do you want to run through these with them because I know that your office had put this all together for us?
Well, I know that the suggestion was, you know, Lauren texting me this, is we're going, if we go through these individually like you started to do, I think would be the best.
Is that okay?
And then we have, we have staff here that is available.
Okay. So just go ahead and continue then?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Chair, can I jump in one more time?
Sure.
I, I hate the idea of sitting at a board meeting and.
And reading.
Wordsmithing, but I'm wondering whether the words grace and compassion should be part of the, the app there because that's directly using the terminology that comes specifically from the DOD and the DOE. Thank you.
Are you speaking about in the accountability one?
Yes, ma'am.
First one? Okay, thank you. We got it. Okay, so then the second one is safety and security. And I know everybody, I hope they have this, but I guess I'll just go ahead and read all this. Seek an increase in safe schools allocations to fund the total cost of school resource officers at each schools in the districts, including charter schools with the ultimate goal of one SRO per thousand students. Establish statewide student data privacy laws and certificate programs that would apply to all vendors that provide software and services to educational entities within the state of Florida. Regulations should include at the minimum restriction on commercial use of student data, data handling, and data protection requirements. Advocate for cyber security threat mitigation services, including SETA, security education training and awareness programs to be funded by the federal E-Rate program. In the interim, as a stopgap measure, state funding should be allocated to compensate for increased exposure associated with E-Rate expenditures. Do we have questions regarding that?
Just, just a couple, a couple comments, if you don't mind. One, with the, the safe schools allocation, one of the things that I, I think we're certainly open to explore, we talked about it last year, is it related to any additional funding? And I'm not talking about stealing safe school dollars for, for the Guardian for what we have, but if we have dollars over and above, I know there's a willingness to explore alternative models, particularly if it relates from a efficiency perspective, small charter schools, some of our smaller schools, if you have a Guardian under supervision of a school resource officer, a model like that, because we certainly have situations that make it where you don't see, it doesn't appear you're getting the same return on investment that you can. So you have a large school with 2,500 students that may have one or two, or, you know, may have two resource officers, maybe. The city of Fort Myers is not funding at the same level that the county is. Then you have a small school that may have a population of 150, 170 students that also has one school resource officer combined. I just think there's a better way to do this. I just want to do it in such a way where I don't short the district's opportunity to have a school resource officer at every school because of all the things we've talked about the whole time. But I know last year, we talked about money on the table for the Guardian program. Now, that was taken out and probably with this year's funding model, it may not be available this year, but at least be open to that, to developing some type of model that would allow us to be a little bit more efficient. The other thing that I want to stress that we haven't seen in our platform before is the whole matter of cybersecurity. This is critically important, particularly if you think about what happened at Miami Dade, if you think about what happened in Lakes County and other places. I think that we have to be more proactive. And one of the things here that, that I think Mr. Davis has explained extremely well, but, you know, if you think about E-Rate, where we have the opportunity to, to buy large amounts of technology at a tremendously reduced rate, but yet the security measures that support that technology, we cannot purchase at E-Rate, so we have to use the full rate for that. So part of this is understanding that as we grow in our dependency for technology, that we also have to grow in our methods and procedures and support for the protection of that technology. So I know that one of the difficult things that we're going to have from a lobbyist's perspective is being able to explain these, these issues. So any help that you can do, I think would be wonderful, but I think as we move forward in this new world, in terms of where technology is used more and more often, we have to, have to always think about the security. And we've had some other districts that have learned some very, very hard lessons, so.
And then would that be just having the right talking points for that, Carol? Is that?
Absolutely. And I think it's very, it's very easy to have the talking points, given the fact that we've all seen some of the really awful things that have happened. And I think there's a few bullet points like that will say, by the way, this is, this is referencing this. We do have some legislators outside our area that we know that cybersecurity is a hot-button issue for them. So that's whenever we need to reach out to some of those other people that, that's, that's their thing, that's in their wheelhouse, so that they can help us with that.
So then maybe we could have Trey do that for us because he knows better than all of us about that.
Yeah, and not.
Right, Trey, and then we can translate Trey.
But that's okay, they probably need to know the terminology that he would say for us.
And we don't need three pages.
Ms. Gittens?
All right.
Okay, two questions. The first one is generic in that, is this, is the order of these items prioritized already or just there?
No.
Okay. And second, on the safety and security, what jumped off the page at me is restrictions on commercial use of student data? Why is student data, in other words, and tell me if I'm wrong, Trey, that if a student uses a program or something, are there companies that are able to collect their data? And if so, I think the word restrictions should be, you know, just, it shouldn't happen.
Right.
So that's a fantastic question. And let me just say that very few states actually have, you know, statewide student privacy laws. Florida is one of those. There are federal programs, for example, there is a Florida Information Protection Act, for example, you know, there's COPA, you know, so we hear about all these acronyms, but mostly at the federal level. So we hear about all these acronyms, but mostly at the federal level. And if you look at FERPA as an example, that's really targeted at government organizations and public entities, not necessarily private organizations. So now, that puts the onus on us and our legal team to ensure that the contractual language that we include, and we give our best effort to ensure, that the data is not harvested by any organizations. The reality is, a lot of these organizations do profit off information like that. So what we're looking for, for example, in this particular legislative item, is to ensure that we have, or put forth, you know, a recommendation for the state to have, like some other states do, like Connecticut and California, for example, where they have very explicit student privacy laws on the protection, handling, and the commercial use of any data like that. And with that, it qualifies organizations honestly to do business with us versus each district trying to handle that on their own, so.
So the thing that comes to mind, when I was teaching Avid, and Avid is connected to the Avid company out in California, and kids can go on and they can, you know, get into the vocabulary or whatever. Are those the types of things? I mean, I know that we participate in the Avid program, but are they able to, as children are participating, able to glean some of that information for future?
Well, we can parse the types of information that they get. There are certain things, for example, that like FIPPA protects, for example, relative to IDs, social security numbers, that sort of thing. And then there's actually, you know, usage data and other data that could be harvested that not, that isn't necessarily protected by, let's say, a FIPPA, you know, as an example. So we would like that to be more explicit, that any organization that actually deals with the state of Florida, specifically like in educational software and services, you know, actually has a standard relative to student privacy to work with, like some other states do, but not all, most all don't.
So as we're presenting this, do we have something that you and your team, you know, innovative, like, here we go, we want you to look at this and here's how this can work?
Yes. We do have some examples of that. I mean, obviously, our, you know, our job is not to write that for the state, but certainly to recommend what we would do and what would benefit other districts. So I know there was a mention of local versus statewide as a benefit, and the reality is this is something that could be used statewide, certainly is not just for Lee County.
Okay. So we'll see you when you return from Tallahassee.
We'll do our best.
Thank you, Trey. Ms. Morgan?
No question.
Okay. Ms. Patrico or Ms. Vaughn?
One of them's gone.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Giovinelli?
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan, if you don't mind, just to go back to accountability, I wanted to make sure that we separated out. There was also the benchmark, I know you read it, but Benchmark for Excellent Student Thinking Best Standards and that one-year moratorium, and we really didn't talk about that, so.
Okay.
I didn't know if the board had questions, or if Carol had any feedback for us, if it was very similar to what you felt with the accountability. Okay.
Now, that was just part of the package that, as we saw it, yes.
Okay. We're good, we're good on that one then.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we're going to move to the next one, which is budget and finance. Update the calculation for the required local efforts, military, to capture the increase in residential and commercial property values and revenue gain from new construction. Change the language in section 1013.646B1, Florida statute, to allow districts to use existing capital outlay, surtax revenue, and impact fees rather than certificates of participation when the total cost per student station exceeds the cost per student station as provided by law. Ooh, I need some explanation on that one.
I have a question.
Do you want me to hit that one first?
Please.
And just going down to that one, right now, you know, we felt when we went down the referendum trail, that we could, similar to impact fees, you not have the restrictions on funds that were raised locally like the restrictions that you see when we have state revenue, okay? So state capital dollars have more restrictions and have to meet the requirements of square foot per student and all of that, whereas our local raised funds don't have that. Well, then, as we're going about a referendum, lo and behold, a new piece of legislation got passed that puts the requirement, puts these requirements on these referendum dollars to where we have to use just really a financial vehicle, a bond or a certificate of participation, in order for us to utilize our funds the way that we see fit. Which means that in doing so, the district has to take on debt and pay interest, even though it's for a short period of time, we still have to do that just because of this relatively new requirement that, you know, must have been written by a banker. So that's, we just would like to see that out of there, so that we don't have to pay unnecessarily interest to use our local dollars the way that we see fit to build schools for kids. So that's that one. I don't know if Dr. Desmore has anything to add to that.
And I do remember this, we've had this conversation before, it just took me a second to remember that. Ms. Desmore, Dr. Desmore, did you have anything else to put in there to add? No? Okay. Ms. Morgan, did you?
Then-
Okay. I'm sorry, Dr. Atkins.
I think she may have a question about that one, or the other one.
Did you have a question?
Well, my question's about the first one, the calculation on RLE.
So just as far as the required local effort, I think with this one, you know, in these very difficult times, you know, where we know that our budget is going to take a hit, one way for local districts to be able to mitigate the impact of that would be to, let's not roll back the required local effort to the degree that we've done in the past, so we could recapture some of the revenues that we would see as a result of increased property values.
Ms. Gittens?
So my question on that one is, if they would change that calculation to give us, and I guess I'm saying it right, to give us more, a larger portion of that money, would we then not have to have the need to increase the millage that was discussed a couple months ago? Am I talking apples and oranges?
No, no, no. You know, there wouldn't be as much of a need, I guess would be the best way to say that.
So in other words, you know, there's the RLE pot of money, and we're getting only a certain portion of it. If they increase the portion that we get, then we would not have to look to do something else, like increasing the millage rate?
Well, what we have seen, and if you look back over probably a decade or more, the required local effort, the millage rate that is in the RLE has actually steadily decreased during that period of time. So if it was just held to where it had been the previous year, then we would have captured that increase in property value and hence would have received more revenue. But what has been done every year is that adjustment back to lower the rate every year, therefore, we're going to receive less dollars every year. Now, the advantage is, if I'm, you know, an elected official, I can say, we gave you a tax cut. The disadvantage is that school districts are not able to capture that additional revenue. And I would also say that other municipalities do have the ability to capture that, those additional dollars. Ours is set by the state. Those that have the more of a local control don't always set it back to the degree like, let's say, the county, I think would be an example of that.
Is it an argument at all to talk about that it has with the housing issue that we had 2007, 2008, when there was such a slump? And from that point on, we have not caught up because we have not moved forward? Is that what we're saying?
I'll look at Dr. Desmore, if you want to-
She's standing there.
Yep.
Yeah. So just a couple of points. I think that you were asking Ms. Gittens about, well, does that mean that we get, there's only one pot of money, that we get a bigger part of that pot? So I think how I would characterize it is, we're making a bigger pot at that point. Because if we're saying that we're going to keep our, or try to keep our required local effort millage rate the same as in a previous year, assuming that your tax roll goes up any amount in any given year, then you're generating more dollars at the local level than what would have been generated under the required local effort that the state would have recalculated. So what you're doing is generating a bigger pot in which you get more local dollars to come to you. So you were asking whether there is, whether that mitigates the need for any additional millage, so just to give you, kind of put it by the numbers, but we were talking about that additional operating millage before. We were talking about, I mean, you could make any amount you wanted to up to the limit in statute, but we were really referencing like a .25 or .5 millage at that point. Looking at the required local effort, the decrease from last year to this year was a .08, right? So if we were looking at it in terms of this year, that would be an additional .08 that we would have had in required local effort. So you see how it compares to the .25 or the .5 that we had previously been talking about. It's not, it doesn't take over the whole amount, but it is some piece that we do not have right now. And then you were, I think your last question, I'm not sure if I understood it, were you asking, does this have anything to do with housing and how the tax rolls took a tumble way back when, in 2008 through 2012, and we haven't yet made up that ground yet, so this would help us do that? Is that the question that you were asking?
Have we had the opportunity to catch up? If they're not increasing it, then, and keeping it where it was, then have we really had the opportunity to keep up with where, you know, the market is?
Well, with, okay, so let me answer that question overall, in terms of like the overall increases in state funding, or so state in FEFP funding, which includes local and state. In FEFP funding, those increases that we have been getting each year generally do not keep up with even cost of living increase. So the answer would be no, we haven't kept up, not necessarily just because of that decline from that period of time, but just in its structure generally. So we haven't kept up all the time with even the cost of living increases, much less some of the other special areas that may increase more than just your general COLA shows across the board. So no, in general, not keeping up. And one of the ways that we could try to help mitigate that is by using that required local effort millage to try to generate more dollars at the local level.
Okay. Thank you.
So then, Carol, would this be more of a local effort for us, right, versus the state?
Well, yes. From that perspective that Dr. Desmond just spoke of, yes, absolutely. But again, that's a matter of educating folks, and this is an issue that doesn't go away. I mean, we've talked about this issue for I don't know how many. I remember the first time, I think, that Ms. Morgan and I met with Senator Pasadomo, that was one of the first meetings we had with her back when you first hired Capital Strategies. So that's been going on a long time. So yes, this is, it's a continuation of trying to educate our local folks about what this really, the real dollar impact this has on your students.
Yeah, because I know-
And just to be clear, that required local effort rate is, like, the legislature sets that. And the way that they set it is set in statute. They're going to do it differently, that is a change in law.
Thank you.
So just to give you a little bit of historical perspective, so if you start at, you know, fiscal year 10, the required local effort was 5.260 mils. It increased in '11 to really the high watermark, which is 5.767 mils. Then it dropped to 5.6, 5.3, 5.3, 5.1, 5.0, 4.7, 4.4, 4.1, 3.899, and for '21, 3.810. So you see a steady decrease in the required local effort. Had that stayed, you know, at one of those higher rates, we would have captured more dollars here in the school district. The other thing, you've also looked at studies, we've seen teacher buying power in terms of what their salary is statewide, and their actual buying power as a teacher in terms of their income has actually decreased during that, you know, the last five years. And so I believe is what the last study I looked at cited, that's also a concern because those are our employees, and that's the impact of reducing that required local effort every year on this organization, is we're not able to do as much for those that work within the district.
So Ms. Jordan, then if I can clarify in regards to what I said with the additional information there, what we're talking about, obviously, we're talking about changing language, changing statute, that takes the entire legislature to do that. But I do believe that what we do have to focus on is our local guys being able to understand that impact locally, just to clarify what I'm telling you. It's bigger picture, however.
Right.
We need to make sure that the local guys understand what's happening in their backyard.
Thank you. And I do believe that Senator Pasadomo has spoken about that before, several times.
Many times.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Giovinelli, any? I just want to make sure I'm not forgetting you over there.
You're not. I'm just, I'm thinking about it as a realtor, and yet our taxes don't go down, the values are going up, so that increases, so I know what the local effort, the local, you know, they take pride in making sure that our taxes don't go up. So I think you're going to have a hard, it's going to be a hard sell.
Ms. Patrico, or whoever's on the phones?
Yes. I have two things. The first is, if I recall correctly, the requirement to borrow for the, against the surtax dollars, so to speak, in order to build these new schools cost us in the neighborhood of $2 million in interest, is that a fair estimate?
Yes, according to Dr. Desmore's.
So as we talk to our local delegation and we advocate for our legislative platform, I don't know if that should be included in there, or we should each be armed with that information? Because I think it's important to show that $2 million worth of Lee County taxpayer dollars were paid to banks instead of put into the capital infrastructure of the schools. That's the first thing. The second thing is, on the RLE, and this question is for Carol, Carol and Ashley, thank you for being there tonight. Do we put our delegation, not just our local delegation, but other representatives and senators across the state, on the defensive by even raising the issue of the RLE? It's my understanding that this is one of those issues where they are not willing to negotiate, and so it makes them angry by even having it on our platform. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Did you want to respond to that first, Carol?
Yeah. Because it was my sense, honestly, in the conversation with Pasadomo, that she recognizes that changing the funding model for public education has created problems. And, you know, what is a tax is a decline in the rollback rate, but an increase in the tax that you're actually paying, you know, is that a tax increase? So in listening to what Mrs. Giovinelli said, you know, and in response to what Ms. Patrico said, I think that these initiatives have to be activated at the state level. The only thing we can do is make absolutely certain that we can document for each of our, members of our delegation, exactly what this means locally. I think it would be very tough for us to take a leading role in this. But I think if there is real interest in having a conversation about, you know, paying for public education at the state level long term, we can start to build an understanding by working with our local delegation.
I wouldn't disagree with anything that Ms. Morgan said or Ms. Giovinelli. I believe that the critical thing is, is the way that it, the way that it is described and the detail that we put to that for people to understand, this is the impact.
Right.
Is this a big, heavy lift? Yes, it is, given the- Yes, it is, given the nature of our legislature and the time, the time that we're living in. But that being said, to not have it there is a disservice to the students and families to be able to explain that this is the actual impact this has to these families that you represent. So I think it's important as an educational tool to do that. It's obvious it's a heavy lift, we've been talking about it for years. It's not, but to not, to not talk about it, to let it fall off the table, I don't believe we should do that. I just believe that we can't do it just with our hands out, we do it with data.
Yeah, and I would agree, that we've talked about it, but we haven't talked about it in a quantitative way that resonates with people. It's, you know, they always go back to it's a tax increase or it's not a tax increase, and that's as far as the conversation goes. And I believe that this is a long-term thing. This is a non-starter this year, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't have the conversation. Because as you say, four years from now, the picture may be very different, and if we haven't spent the interim years, you know, talking about responding to their questions with respect to this, then we're not going to be able to pull it out when, you know, the timing is optimal. So I feel very strongly about this one.
Okay, and I think it is because it's a, we need to make sure we have a strong and a clear message when we're doing any of these. Ms. Gittens?
And I think, in response to the comment about, you know, not, for lack of a better word, you know, ticking them off with bringing this up, I think it's all in the way it's presented. It's in the verbiage, it's in the manner that, you know, we're not here to tell you what to do, we just want to remind you that here, boots on the ground, this is what we're dealing with, we know that you're dealing with it.
Okay. Oh, Ms. Giovinelli?
I was just thinking, would this, would Pasadomo champion it? Does anyone?
I don't know.
That's my question. I mean, that's what we need.
I don't know. How's that for a definitive answer? Don't know.
Well, I think, I think there was a time when she was, before all of this, before where we are today, she was willing to have that conversation.
Right.
She was willing to engage in that conversation, whether or not it went anywhere. But I think where we are right now has totally changed, you know, what her priorities may be with respect to the legislature this year. So yeah, I think she's interested, but it may not be the level of interest that she had.
And I would totally agree with you about that, but again, back to the point that Ms. Patrica was bringing up too, if it falls off the table, we don't have an opportunity to educate.
Right.
And the education comes to the quantitative data that we can put forward in a very, you know, bullet point type presentation, you know, that the elevator presentation. And then when we meet with her and other locals and other, once we determine who's going to take on all the leadership roles in education, we'll be meeting with them too, that'll be a whole nother round.
We don't know that yet.
Right, right, well, you know, it'll be, it'll be the end of November before we know that, but, you know, that, I think that needs to be on our list of things that we, again, quantify about what it really means to our families.
Yeah, keep it in the forefront.
Yeah, I have something.
Oh, Ms. Vaughn, sorry. Go ahead, please.
Oh, okay. One of the things that really concerns me has to do with money for our teachers. And I know we think quantitative and all of that, and I think that's really important. But I think somehow there needs to be a human factor that goes out to our legislators. One of the reasons I think this is going to be particularly difficult is that in their minds, well, hey, we just gave, you know, we gave all this money so that all our beginning teachers will make at least, you know, .47.5 and all of that. And I think that in many minds, it's letting them off the hook. Anyway, that's one thing. Secondly, not, I'm not trying to put anybody down, I'm trying to be realistic, even if we had a vivid person among our current local delegation that was going to take up our cause, let's be honest, the party gives these legislators their marching orders. And so I don't really see that this would be, you know, certainly include them, and maybe they can carry some of the more personal things forward. And they're the ones that could go into the schools, and I know we've taken them on like VIT tours, but we need to, we need to have them watch teachers teaching the hybrid and all of the other things that are going on, and give them a realistic sense. I think it's more of a, on the state level. Does that make sense?
Yes.
If it's really going to fly with just putting all our eggs in these local delegation baskets.
No, that wasn't what was said. They know, they know it has to come from the state.
Say that again?
We, it's understood that it needs to come from the state. But we have to do our work on the ground, boots on the ground, here locally.
No, no, I totally understood that.
Right.
But what I'm saying is, I'm not sure how far our work on the ground with our local delegation, I'm not sure how expedient that's going to be for us.
Okay.
I'm being very honest.
Betty, Carol's going to answer.
And that, and there's a lot of truth to what you have said, absolutely. Having been involved with this for a long, long time, Ashley and myself both, we understand that, we also understand the realities of what Lee County is faced with this year, and Collier too, to a certain extent, and that is the fact that we have a young delegation. If we don't start educating them now and bringing them on as our, as our representatives, as those people who really understand what we're doing, we're missing, we're missing the boat. We have to start from day one with them because they're such a young delegation before, before they go to Tallahassee and everything changes. But that being said, what we do when we see the list that comes out of more senior members who we've already been interacting with because we've been doing this for a while, and we see who's actually going to be taking the leadership roles, that's whenever we reach out there and we reach out to those people in leadership roles. But we do that by taking our young delegation and bringing them along with us to be able to get to know these people who are in leadership that we've made a great effort in getting to know over the years. And that's, that's pretty much the plan that we have, that we use every year. This year is a little different, again, with having a younger delegation. It's going to take a little more time and a little more handholding in education on our part, but that's okay. In doing that, we hopefully will be able to set a foundation for them that will last for a long time. Does that make sense to you, Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, it makes sense, but that's not really what I'm saying. Actually, and you've just made my point to me even stronger, I'm not saying leave the locals behind, they need to look, they need to be into the schools, they need to be with our data, they need to see the nitty gritty in the schools, in the classrooms, how people are making do, they need to talk to teachers and others. I would say adding the human perspective to our data is what's going to help those people. I mean, look at campaign commercials on TV, they're rarely, or they may have data in the background, but they're showing the human factor, and that's what really gets people. Because they're such a young delegation, they're not going to be pushing, I'm glad to hear you saying that senior people and people in charge, they're going to be the ones that make the changes. It's just like, you know, Pasadomo, at one point, you know, she would be the champion for whatever, but let's be honest, as a freshman legislator, you're not going to go in there and, you're not going to go in there and buck the party line.
Well, I think Spencer proved that he worked for us, so, I mean...
I know he hasn't, but anyway, I won't get into it because I have a strong political difference here, but let's name one thing Spencer has done, one thing, grow our own and, right now, we need to keep our teachers, and that's all I'm going to say. This is a real hot button issue for me, and I'm hoping that we really go in statewide, include our local people, educate them, but they're not really making the difference because they're freshmen.
Thank you.
That's all I'm concerned.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Gittens?
One of the things that Ms. Vaughn mentioned about, you know, the .47.5 and the increase and all of that, and I agree that in one sense, we don't just say, oh, thank you, you know, kind sir for this, and, you know, bow and genuflect and leave with that amount. But I don't know if it would go under budget, or a suggestion is under the teacher certification, which is our next thing, and that first item, asking for local authority and teacher evaluations and pay for performance, and then add a caveat to that, something about that increase that they just gave for, that it needs to be spread across the board. Does that, does that understandable?
Well, when we get to that one, then we can revisit that. Is there anything else on this topic right here, though, that you might have? Questions on, anyone? Well, I'm going to move to that one then, that way it'll just tie right into what you had just said.
Right.
Okay. So, Carol, you guys good?
We're good.
We're educating on that one.
Thank you.
You're educating.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Did you understand what I was saying about it, though?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely, completely.
Yep. Okay, so the next one then, Dr. Atkins, did you have anything else on that one before I move to the next? Okay. Teacher certification and retention, allow districts to have local authority over teachers' evaluation and pay for performance. Modify the general knowledge exam requirements to allow for professional performance points. The proposal recommends that a new teacher who receives a district rating of highly effective or effective during their first three years of employment earn three to five professional performance points. That would count towards their score on the general knowledge exam. Now, Ms. Gittens? I'm going to go first, please.
All right, thank you. So I pretty much explained on the first one, I am so in favor of allowing districts to have local authority, that is supremely important. And then over teacher evaluations and the pay for performance, like I mentioned, and somehow adding some little caveat about the pay increase that was done. I don't know the wording right now, but something that could tie into that pay for performance. Because if you're really about pay for performance, if you have a teacher that has worked, you know, 20 years, and they're making similar to someone that just started, then is that really pay for performance? So, I mean, it's just something to think about with that. On the next one, that was the one that I had presented last year, and I think part of the pushback was, I forget where we were, and someone said, well, we don't want to reward someone who doesn't do well on an exam, and that's not the idea. The idea is the data that shows how many of our teachers come within one or two points. And I can help give you some of that data over and over again. And they are working, you know, towards getting their certification, they're shown as highly effective or effective, and yet they miss it by one point or two points. They've shown the pedagogy already, so why not give them some, you know, points for what they've already done? They've shown that they can run a classroom, that's why they're highly effective or effective. And if the exam is the only thing that's keeping them by one or two points. And I don't know, maybe it would be more palatable to take out the three to five and just, you know, say two points, or one to two, or one to three, or something like that. But I do recall at one of the meetings when it was discussed, someone said, well, if they just can't pass the test, why are we going to, you know?
And I'm going, and I know that at the FSBA thing that you and I had gone to, this was part of that conversation as well. So thank you for bringing that back up. And Dr. Atkins, I believe you had something to...
Yeah, just a couple things, and really just in support of what Ms. Gittens was saying. The first thing, with the teacher evaluation and pay performance, it also goes along with part of the first accountability platform, because one of the things, it's a hinge of teacher performance pay, has to do with the VAM and the VAM calculation and all of that. And if you're, if you're holding that harmless, then it makes it very, very difficult to implement the current pay plan as it, as it now sits. Secondly, arguably, I've always felt that there was way too much oversight in terms of how we design these plans, and so that for some people, it might be an apples-to-apples comparison, but for many folks, the exam at which they are compared to really is not particularly relevant, you know, think about PE as an example. And that I really strongly believe that, that our bargaining team, the district bargaining team, along with the Teachers Association of Lee County, as we historically have done in the past, and what they continue to do in the future, now and into the future, I think that we can design a better plan that would actually be more motivational than what we currently see. And we would truly reward our teachers for performance instead of, you know, a, an exam that may or may not even be relevant to what they're doing. Secondly, I wholeheartedly agree with, with what Ms. Gittens and others have said regarding the general knowledge exam. One of the things, that first three years of employment, in terms of retaining, here we have teachers that are demonstrating by actual performance in the classroom that their students are achieving. So they're doing the job, an effective or highly effective job as a teacher, yet they cannot pass an exam that I would argue, and I think others too, Dr. Pruitt has certainly made this argument, is not relevant to even what they do. Some of the questions, you know, if you haven't been in a 10th grade geometry class in a few years, you might not do as well on that exam either. And so to, for us to lose teachers because they're not able to get a few points on an exam that's not even relevant to what they actually do is ludicrous in my mind, and therefore, you know, I think this is a good, I think this is something that we should have a part as our platform, you know, that, that if a teacher's performance demonstrate they're effective, then that should count towards something, towards their certification.
Thank you. And Carol, please remind me, I believe that thanks to Ms. Gittens bringing this to us last year, we did take this, and we did, you actually spoke to multiple people regarding this and what that looks like, to make them understand. So this would just be like a carryover from our last year.
Absolutely.
Correct?
Yeah, and we have, yeah, we have all of the data from last year too.
When she had shared.
And, you know, available to utilize again, and yes, this was a topic that did get a lot of discussion last year.
Right.
Do you think it's the, do you think we need to revise the way it's written, or is, I don't know if that was the pushback or what, and then I think even more so this year with the shortage, you know, nationwide of teachers, and the situation with COVID and trying to find more teachers, it's even just more paramount now.
But I think when you shared your experience and you told the story, and it is about the story, but when you did share that information, they understood and they could relate it better when it was coming out of your... they understood and they could relate it better when it was coming out of your mouth to them. Because they don't know what they don't know.
I sat through trying to pass the general knowledge exam. And the interesting thing, it took me, what, the third time? The three times, and then the third time I passed the general knowledge. I passed all the parts except for, I think, the math. And the math was like college calculus. And I was not teaching anything to do with math. And on the other hand, with the FEELI for administration, I passed it the first time. So, there's something, you know, not right with that. So, and that was for a master's program as opposed to this for someone teaching first grade.
Right. No, we understand, and we do have all of the documentation that we utilized last year. And I do believe that it makes perfect sense whenever, again, you put it down to that actual story, such as what you just said. She's Dr. Atkins' daughter.
No, because what he alludes to as well, I mean, that just makes sense. Ms. Morgan, please.
No, actually, I was going to just make the same comment that Ms. Gittens did. Did we learn anything from last year that would, you know, encourage us to rethink any element of this? And you basically said no, that we should just move forward with it as is, and that's so.
And that's the human portion of that is bringing the people. Ms. Vaughn or Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you. No, thanks.
Okay, just want to make sure I'm not missing you. Ms. Javonelli?
Well, the only thing I would like to see regarding the retention part is making, making sure we get additional funding maybe for the, uh, tenured teachers that we, that, you know, all the new teachers got money, but we didn't really get money, you know? I know we're working very hard to do that on our end, but that's back to the local control. And so, I get that, but I would like to see, and think of the teachers that's been working hard for twenty, thirty years, you know, and that are now making the same amount of money as brand-new teachers. Dr. Atkins, could you weigh in on that?
Absolutely. I mean, I do certainly agree that if we have, you know, more flexibility in terms of how we fund, like if you, if you go put out there a magical number like we saw this year, then it makes it very, very challenging for us to really award, you know, equitable across the, across, across the board. And that gets back to some of the other things. If you think about the evaluation piece and being able to have increased flexibility there, that puts more dollars that can be then used to support, you know, what's being advocated so we can retain our veterans like we can our new teachers. I mean, they're all kind of linked, but local control and flexibility, I think, helps us to reward our teachers in a way that, that we can retain better locally by making, keeping those decisions locally, if that makes sense.
It does.
For sure. Any other questions? We'll go ahead and move on to early childhood. And I know Kathleen, this was one of the, Ms. Morgan, this is one of the ones that you had sent. Expand access to and increase quality of childcare provider offerings. Implement a pilot program to allow students deemed not ready for kindergarten to participate in summer VPK. Offer state certified pre-kindergarten teachers the same treatment benefits and award opportunities as K through twelve teachers. Fully, I'm sorry, can't see here again. Fully integrate early learning programs, integrate early learning programs under the Florida Department of Education so there is clear ownership to ensure quality programs, appropriate funding, and child outcomes. Eliminate the impact that pre-kindergarten's classrooms have on the Florida inventory of schoolhouses, FISH. So, I'm going to start with Ms. Morgan, please.
Well, yeah, I mean, I put some of this in there and then some of this is, I did not know that pre-K classrooms have an impact on FISH. So, gee, I mean, shame on me. That was a big surprise. And I don't understand how that happens at all. But going back to early childhood, it's clear in this district, and I assume in most districts, that we have a huge problem in terms of kindergarten readiness. So, we have to address it in terms of a linkage with curriculum and accountability and expectations. And that, that means that we need to do something about early childhood education and its relationship K-12. We need to make certain that kids who are not ready have an opportunity to catch up. And that means providing, if we identify they're not ready for kindergarten, providing an opportunity for them to be ready. Because frankly, if you enter kindergarten and you're not ready, you probably will drop out the minute you can because you will never consider yourself an effective student or good learner or whatever, because you will always be behind. So, I just feel, and in terms of same treatment benefit and reward opportunities for pre-K teachers as K-12 teachers, absolutely. They're the beginning of the education stream. So, they need to be getting the same, um, treatment. So, anyway, that's.
Thank you. Dr. Atkins, do you want to elaborate on yours, on this?
Yeah, there's, um, I think she did a great job doing that. I mean, I couldn't agree more. I had a superintendent tell me, you know, literally five years ago, if you want to, if you really want to change, you know, Lee County's education trajectory, start with really pumping up your pre-K program. And so, this is where I think we need to put a lot of time and effort because our kids simply are not as prepared as they should be. Remember, some of the data that we've showed with you is that the degree of preparedness in Lee County is lower than the majority of the state. I think there's only something like six other districts that have a lower kindergarten readiness the last I looked at, and those were small rural districts. You know, that is something that we certainly do not want for our kids here in Lee County. So, all the things that we can do, we can certainly talk to you a little bit more about the FISH piece, but that's, Ms. Gittens, this kind of goes back to some of the conversations we had about portables. These things impact our capacity in the district and our ability to build schools where we need to build schools. And so, you know, that is something we do feel should be set aside, you know, to have its own capacity and not be counted against the district. So, and Dr. Savage, I'm going to ask you to speak a little bit more to this one if we have a more detailed question, because you're.
Well, while he's coming up, I just wanted to ask about that, that maybe he can give us an example of how adding pre-K classrooms to our number on the FISH report, you know, kind of prohibits us from adding other seating.
Well, I'm certainly not an expert, but I could have, Mr. Jemali, give us more expert on this, but I can give you the broad strokes of it and see if that's sufficient.
Just, yeah.
You know, like, example would be James Stevens, where we currently have, our current FISH capacity inhibits our ability to demonstrate to the state that we need, that we have the right to build schools in other places by having an underutilized facility anywhere in our district that works against our overall aggregate total. However, if we're able to shift those classrooms from a general use to a pre-K use, that then allows us the ability to take away from one particular usage and change it to an area where now we're showing that we still have a need in other particular areas. So, like, for example, at James Stevens, we took two buildings. By taking those two buildings out of our K through twelve and shifting them over to our pre-K, we are communicating to the state that we are satisfying this obligation in pre-K, enhancing our ability to serve more pre-K students. But we are now also simultaneously, just more accurately communicating that that school no longer has the capacity that it used to have. Those two, to give you that specific example, those two buildings worth of classrooms are actually changed to a different school site, our pre-K center, so that that capacity essentially moves from one building to another, even though physically they haven't changed, they're still on the same site. So, it's just communicating information in a different way. Just allows us to show more precision in terms of demonstrating need to the state. Because they're looking at the overall piece, even though we're a giant district, they're looking at all of our total aggregate of information. They'll say, well, you have space over here, why can't you just send them? Like, for example, the West Zone, we have considerable space in the West Zone, but it would be, it just would not be feasible for us to transport students all the way from Lehigh to Cape Coral. But in smaller communities, that may be very well what's required to do, to have to move kids around in different areas. As we go through our proximity effort as well, that's just all the more a piece of this equation as well.
So, tell me if I'm wrong thinking this, that, take James Stevens, and it's, they're all together with the pre-K and the K through eight and all of that. And that's the number that's on FISH. So, you separate out the pre-K. So, DOE is saying now you don't have the capacity, I mean, the ability to build any additional seats at, in the new James Stevens, you know, K through eight. Is that, does that make sense?
I'm not sure I'm following, but I think, well, basically, the overall, basically, each individual room in FISH is assigned to a certain amount of student stations. And as you change what those rooms are communicating, it will overall reduce that overall burden, basically, for that entire building to say, well, we no longer can satisfy this number of students because those simply no longer exist at that school in that capacity. They do, however, exist over here in this different, in this different MSID that can now service, that is, that we use to service our programs. And again, it varies by the programs that we use. So, like, our ESE is looked at differently than our Head Start, which is looked at differently than our K through twelve.
So, if you, I mean, really basic level here, if there were 500 students at James Stevens, including the pre-K, and you took 100 of those and made a pre-K separately, and then you needed to rebuild James Stevens, you could only rebuild it for 400.
Right. That's correct. Yeah, so if you take 100 out, you only have 400 left, and then the building all down the road, yes.
Okay.
That would be correct.
Okay. Good job.
I think the other thing to bear in mind is that, you know, that's really, I think what we're doing in this case is we're certainly using capacity to meet a need that exists there. But that also, if you reduce overall FISH capacity there, then that gives us a little bit more flexibility to put it where we need. One of the things that's coming out of this whole Davis demographics is, in doing a deep dive, is seeing that particularly in some of our middle zones, subzones, there is a tremendous need for student stations. And we are, you know, we're reducing that or we're addressing that need for capacity by busing students into the other two zones. And so, while we really need to build in E2, as an example, some, you know, state could say, well, yeah, but you've got capacity over here in E1. You should be busing kids there. But if you actually live at Edgewood Elementary, you understand that that creates a mobility problem because then they want, as soon as they can, get back to E2. So, by utilizing our facilities a little bit more in a manner that we can serve pre-K where we need pre-K capacity, but then allow us to free up FISH capacity to make a better case for building a school in a more central location, I think it helps the district overall.
So, and one last thing, please.
Yeah, I want to stay on target because we only have so much time.
Okay, so you're talking E2 and E1 and busing the kids back and forth and all of that. With our proximity plan that is in the works right now, is that something, then, that has to be approved by DOE that they, you know, or is that we have total local control on how we do this piece?
Well, we always have to in terms of when we're building new facilities and determining where those are going to be located and their capacity, we have to have, you know, permission from the DOE to do that. You know, now, you have some flexibility in terms of local funds, but overall, you still have to have, have their approval to build.
We communicate that through, like, the five-year work plan. You know, we have to constantly communicate with the state of where we anticipate building and so forth.
Yeah. No, it was, my question was about, not about where to build and all that. I'm talking about the thought of the example Dr. Atkins gave of, okay, so you say you're crowded in E1, we'll just bus some kids to E2. But we're saying, no, we're not going to do that. We're going to create proximity and change that. So, are we going to get any pushback from DOE on?
Well, hopefully, if we do a good job of this, on our proximity plan, it will actually make us even more precise. I think that's kind of our hope in this, is that you're drawing the lines. If you're really, when you're drawing your lines and your boundaries, you're really considering the capacity of your buildings as you're in your, as you're doing that effort, then what you end up with is drawing, drawing boundaries that will result in schools being properly filled. And I think that's, that when you have giant boundary systems like ours in the East Zone, the subzones that cut across such large swaths of land and infrastructure, there's just a lot of opportunity for issues there, like the example Dr. Atkins cited about Edgewood. You know, the, thinking about where Edgewood is actually physically located, is there anything about that school's location that to you screams east Lee County? You know, it's really in the downtown, heart of town area.
Right. And it's the same thing with what is it, Bay, Bay Area or whatever?
I'm sorry, can I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just want to make sure that we're sticking to the subject.
Okay.
Of what they need to do. So, are you, do you have all the information that you need? Or is there any questions that you may have, what they're speaking on? No?
We're good.
So, Debbie?
I have a question.
Wait, Ms. Vaughn, I'm going to have Ms. Fisher, please.
Okay.
Mr., Dr. Savage, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, as we're talking about communicating our legislative priorities to our legislators, including our new local legislative delegation, my concern is that when we're doing our proximity plan and when we're, you know, all of that is important, but I think that there's something more basic that that's where my mind was going when Ms. Jordan said, you know, are we sticking to the subject? Because how do we communicate the priorities to these people? So, I think we have to show and tell the story. And so, there are, regarding pre-K, I think that the lack of readiness for kindergarten is deeper than not getting to pre-K the summer before kindergarten. I think that there are a lot of risk factors that we need to consider. And so, I would say the socioeconomic status is one of the risk factors. And that, and that, I think we need to educate our legislative body that that low socioeconomic status then shows other risk factors. So, we look at poor prenatal care. What happens birth to three is extremely important. And I know that we are working with our community partners, Healthy Lee and the Early Childhood Coalition and all of those to try to look at how we can do that. Another factor, I think, is mobility. Some of these families are not stable in their houses. And so, what's happening there is that they are not getting adequate exposure to language development and, you know, their parents are working or struggling and don't really, may not have the language, may not have the education themselves. So, I think that somehow we have to convince them that what we can do when we do get them is that we can take them further. And I think that we have the data to show that that is what happens. I think even barring any severe learning problems or anything, I think even when we get kids into kindergarten who are not ready, they make amazing strides once they're in that secure environment and then they're getting that consistent, um, support and, and teaching and exposure to things that they may not have been exposed to before. So, I think that has to be part of the picture that we paint when we, when we ask about, you know, like, fully integrating learning programs and having pilot programs. I think we have to say, why? Why do we need that at this point? So, I think that may be part of it. Just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Vaughn, please.
Yes. Actually, Ms. Fisher said a little bit of what I was going to say because if we start worrying about this when they're four years old, we commit to be both because, as she said, zero to three, I'm not going to go into the list, but there's a huge list of things that affect their cognitive ability and literally they're waiting from that time. And I've been on the pendulum for better, early growth, childcare, and education probably for eight to five years. And to me, this is an area where, and I think we missed an opportunity several years ago, is to support something the county commission has never supported, which is, um, how teenagers, their, their. um, child tenders, there, there, there are a lot of, um, services that are, that children and families don't have here in Lee County. And, and I think it's just gotten worse over the past several years, um, just the demographics of our county. So that's one thing, and this, this is one where I really feel like we need to, um, educate local, um, other, other local, um, elected officials, um, why this will benefit the whole county. Um, the question that I had was bullet point number one, I'm not sure what that means, expand access to and increase quality of childcare provider offerings. Um, I'm, I'm not sure how this fits into our particular priority. Could you maybe put it on there?
Yeah, just a second, Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Vaughn, somebody's coming up.
Can you?
Yes, they're going to speak in a second.
Does Dr. Dr.?
Cause that, all right, cause I, I depend, I was going to comment further depending on the answer.
Okay, they're going to give you an answer. Please.
All right, so Dr. Burr, who really helped us with this part of the platform, is that the, is that the microphone, just for those out there on the phone now?
Thank you. I was going to try to introduce myself through the mask, but you're doing that for me. Um, the expanding access to and increased quality of childcare provider offering is kind of goes to part of what Ms. Fisher was saying, and, um, I think Ms. Morgan also said is that by kind, by fourth, four-year-old, it's almost getting to be too late. So we could get the kids in the, in quality programs, pre-K program or, um, early childhood programs, childcare programs, daycare programs. We have a, um, a group that started working last year on bringing in providers and helping them understand what a quality program looks like, getting them on board to be preferred providers for the district so that we can ensure that all of our students are receiving a really high, high-quality childcare environment, which will only prepare them better for the actual four-year-old pre-VPK and, and Head Start programs, and then make them even more ready for kindergarten, which will help us meet our, our goal of getting those, those, uh, more students ready for kindergarten when they enter. So that's why we're including the, um, childcare providers, because it has to start way back then.
Okay, Dr. Gervin.
Really, the, the more that, that we are, as a district, are able to bring aboard collaborative partners in the community that really meet the standards that we need them to meet, I think it benefits the entire community. Cause this is not something the school district can do on its own. Our footprint in, in pre-K or childcare, you know, for two, three, four-year-olds is much, much smaller than what truly exists out there in the community.
Sure, absolutely. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, well, okay, that's what I thought was meant by that, but what I'm going to say is, is that probably needed the most, their parents are the least likely to be able to afford that. And I understand if, if no, you know, if, if kids are enrolled in, um, a daycare program and they're playing all day and watching videos, and the key word is high quality is the thing that's going to make the difference, including the nutrition and, um, all the things that go wrong with that. So I'm, I'm just wondering, not that I disagree, I don't disagree at all, but I'm just wondering why it's under, exactly under our legislative priorities? Because aside from advocating with county commissioners and, and private entities, how do we do that? How do we make those high quality where you can certify early childhood teachers? If you're not, I mean, we'll make it cheap enough. How about early Head Start? Don't we have, um, a waiting list still on early Head Start?
Can somebody answer her question, please?
Actually, in the past, we've had quite a waiting list, which, um, would help us in our future goals of expanding, um, pre-K opportunities, but as COVID has done with everything else in the world, it's kind of disrupted, um, the enrollment and the waiting list process for early childhood programs as well. So we're slightly down in our, um, community care providers partnership, and that's our, our young ones, and also in our early Head Start, which are birth to three. Um, we are down slightly in those. Made significant progress in the month of September. We increased our numbers significantly from mid-September to, uh, the first of October, but still do not have a waiting list or have a waiting list only for people who want to remain accepted but do not feel yet comfortable bringing their students back into the program. So there is no waiting list like there currently has been, or the past path just has been to have so many people waiting there that we could fill immediately if, if we had an opening. That's not quite there, we're working towards it, but we are, um, we're still down a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, but what about on the other side, which is five of eight years, um, Austin Abel, the brain, I was asking, you mentioned working with partners. Where's that money coming from? Where's the money coming from to subsidize, um, high-quality daycare, with the parents who can't afford it?
Can you talk to the, um, federal funding that we got to work with the Early Learning Coalition to create standards, um, for the early childhood providers so that they would be recognized, early childhood providers with respect to getting kids ready for elementary school?
And I guess too, I, can we?
So let me continue, so, I mean, the fact of the matter is, we have had federal support to do some of this. The problem has been that, as a result of the grant, we learned that the teacher turnover is so significant that we can't have the impact that we expected. And that brings us back to two of the things here. One is teacher pay, because if people can go to higher-paying jobs, why would they do early childhood? And the second thing is, early childhood certification is very difficult because the state doesn't support early child certification because it's a low-paying job, even though it's a high-demand job. So there are a bunch of things that come into play here, and we're basically looking at trying how, to figure out how to fill the gaps between what's happening at the federal level, what we need at the local level, and what the state can do to help us, um, pull it all together.
Well, so do you, is that something, and Carol, is there, or Ashley, either one, um, is that something, is this something that you think we can consolidate to bring?
I, I, I think we need to, and as Ashley and I were sharing our thoughts here during the, the dialogue that we've had, um, there was a, a tremendous amount of effort placed on this last year, tremendous.
I mean, it died in the 11th hour.
It, it, it died in the 11th hour because the Senate and the House couldn't come to an agreement on the language. That being said, this isn't go, this is, to me, not going away. COVID is going to have an impact on this, a tremendous impact on this. However, the people who were driving the train, if you will, for that bill are both going to be there. And the, and the House bill was far superior bill, you know, and yet they just couldn't get it across the finish line because of the fact that the two chambers couldn't come to final agreement. All of the things that you have on your list here, I don't think the FISH was on there, but other than that, these other things were incorporated in that because people are worried statewide about the quality of these, because there are centers that, per the conversation you're having, where it's videos and, and, you know, a cracker. That's one thing you really do have to pay attention to. I totally get that. And trying to bring it under the Florida Department of Education is another big thing that, and again, if they ran out of time, the conversation broke down, the negotiation broke down, will it come back? I'd lay money on that, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Vaughn, did you hear?
Yeah, my fin- my final comment, I'm, well, perhaps some of these things that we have listed under early childhood are seen to the future because it sounds like, um, we just don't even have enough certified, um, certified childcare providers. And, and again, I ask.
Okay, so we have a problem with, you know, the X number slot for early, um, um, early education for, um, what am I thinking of? Anyway, I'm losing my, my train of thought, start. Um, but I keep coming back to how would we offer, how, I mean, I, I, I just don't understand how we can increase quality childcare provider offerings and keep the, um, keep the fee low so that the kids that need it the most, their parents can afford it? Because let's face it, grandchildren who are in expensive daycare, we, um, offer the, um, the, the pay right there. Certified.
Ms. Ms. Vaughn, I have a, we have somebody that's going to give you an explanation, and I apologize because I know you can't see me.
That is my fault, I'm.
Yeah, thank you, somebody's going to, we're going to get that right now.
Okay, well, the, the, the process, and Bethany Quisimary is here because she was involved in it much longer than I am. I'm new to this position, two months yesterday.
Congratulations.
Um, but, um, but what, what I know about it, she can fill in what I don't know about it. But what, the whole thought behind this is, nobody wants to provide childcare that is less than quality. I mean, but sometimes you don't know how to do it, if you don't know how to do it. So, okay, there is no state certification for childcare, but if we can partner with the childcare programs out in the community to provide them professional development and, you know, give them some, uh, some media to recognize them as a preferred provider for Lee County, to put in their doors and their windows and attract new members and, and, you know, just give them, them that preferred, preferred provider pre-K status, give them materials, um, possibility, and provide kindergarten field trips where they can go and check out kindergartens and, and get a better understanding of what kids are going to be expected to do when they get to kindergarten. All of those things that we can do as a district to bring them along beside us, we can't obviously drag them kicking and screaming, but the more support we can bring them, the, the, the thought process is, the more likely they are to get on board and begin to provide that quality childcare. And we're including all of those centers that typically would get more support from, um, the Early Childhood Coalition and, and helping to provide, to support parents who can't afford daycare. So it's not just the high, the high-flying daycares that everybody, um, fights to get into, but it's all of the childcare programs, even the ones that, especially the ones that get support, um, because their parents might not have the means to pay for it on their own.
Did, did that answer, was that, did you understand that, Ms. Vaughn?
I might have understood all of it.
Okay.
But I'm still not hearing where your point is coming from. And I don't think it needs to be totally a district because we can't do everything.
Correct.
It's so important to us, and we need to convince somebody, it's important in Lee County, so I'm going to end right there.
Yeah, but Ms. Vaughn, uh, Ashley's gonna, Ashley's gonna, um, speak on that, please.
Well, I understand what you're saying, and I think maybe it's the words expand access to, that is the issue that you're having with, because I understand what the staff is saying about increasing the quality of the early childhood development curriculum as long as they're willing and work with the district. And I think what you're saying, Ms. Vaughn, is that we can't control the access, getting more people, lowering the rates for child daycare for people that can't afford it. So maybe we just get rid of the words expand access to and rewrite that sentence.
Yeah, I, I, I think, and you're absolutely right, it just doesn't seem, not that I think it's free, it would be wonderful.
Right.
But I, I, I think another thing that's missing perhaps is a way that the state should, um, you know, I know it was said, they don't support people getting, um, certified for early childhood, but that, that should be an app, to me, as, as well, that, um, that there's, that there's particular certifications that include not just how to safely watch the kid out on the playground and, and given, using crackers, but how to actually engage the child's mind. And, and it's pretty different supporting that, um, maybe even in, in the state colleges and universities, it's something that I think we should stress as part of our legislative priorities. And I stand so much, I'm sorry, I'm done.
Uh, just a second, Ashley has something else?
We have in the, under the child, early childhood, to have the state offered certified pre-kindergarten teacher treatment benefit opportunities. And I know that was in the, I think that was in the bill last year. Cause I agree, I, I know what you're, I understand what you're saying, and I think that, that language, to have certified pre-K teachers, was in the language last year.
Okay, Ms. Uh, Ms. Gittens?
Well, and I, that's part of what I was going to say, looking at the, our list under early childhood, I'm almost thinking that the third and fourth one should be flipped. In other words, if we fully integrate early learning programs, it's saying that we're providing the, um, you know, curriculum and opportunities in the programs for them to participate, and if they participate in that, then offer certified pre, uh, you know, teachers the same treatment. So in other words, one comes before the other one. If you choose to participate as a high-performing pre-K, then offer you the same benefits as the other.
All right, um, did you have something you want to add, just because?
I just, I just wanted to clarify something for Ms. Vaughn as well. The, the bill that, um, they were referring to, early learning and early grade success, I was actually on that legislative committee and very disappointed that it fell, um, last minute. But that would cover all of the things that Ms. Vaughn was referring to. So in that bullet for fully integrating early learning programs, that, once it's under the Department of Education, that means that they follow the same statutes as the public education system with their programming, with their accountability system for assessments. And so then they would have an assessment system at the beginning and the end of their programs to ensure that it was a quality education.
DCF now, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
That's the problem.
That's the problem.
Thank you, Dr. Quisimary.
Can I ask, is there a program now that, and maybe this is for Dr. Quisimary, do we have some type of certification or anything now for pre-Ks, just, you know, our district?
We, we do for our public education systems because we are under, so the Head Start programs and the early learning programs that are within, um, Lee County School District or any public school district have to follow the Florida Department of Education. The early learning programs that are under the Office of Early Learning and off, under the Office of Early Learning coalitions, they do not have to follow those same statutes.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to career and technology education. Ladies, do you have what you needed? Ashley, yeah?
Yep. Thank you. We're fine.
Thank you. Career and technology education, provide funding for the recruitment and retention of CTE instructors for high-demand programs based on labor market alignments. And I know that's Ms. Davis. Um, does anybody have any questions regarding this, please?
Something that we were, as we were kind of talking about this a little bit more in detail, uh, one of the things that we are considering, um, asking for or maybe having considered is the development of a, of a, really, a statewide adjunct instructor program so that we could actually work to pay the wage that is more in alignment with that instructor. So if you think about, you know, like Florida Gulf Coast University, different colleges, universities, the professors earn different amount of dollars just because of demand of the field. Uh, you know, you hear Mr. Greenwell over at South talk about, as a welder, I could certainly earn a higher wage. Uh, you hear others talk about, if I had the flexibility of maybe offering, you know, only part-time a week where I could come in and teach. only part-time a week where I could come in and teach. So we, we think that if, if we really explored this a little bit further and came up with a, an adjunct, maybe outside of our conventional compensation systems that we have, like with the Teachers Association, that, that we could, um, fill some of the demand for, for vacancies that are out there and the need that's out there. You know, one thing that, that Rita said to me today was, you know, it's very difficult to be bold and innovative when you can't attract the people to fill those positions. And so our children, our students really need exposure to these highly-trained individuals, and I think we have to recognize that our old compensation systems do not meet the need of the workforce. And therefore, we would like to maybe look at a pilot here to where we could do an adjunct type model that would pay more and closer alignment so that we could meet the high demand for programs such as healthcare. I mean, it's something we might even explore with Lee Health, uh, and then other construction trades, you know, that we know are in high demand.
Good idea. Do you, are you good with that? Are there any comments, questions? From above? Okay, moving right along to facilities. Convey a work group or task force to review and update the size and space and occupy design criteria of SREF to better meet district needs. Due to industry standards and construction costs increasing 6.5% year-over-year, the past three years provide flexibility in Section 1013.646B1 Florida statute on total cost per student station, school construction requirements. Dr. Atkins?
So, um, yeah, I'm certainly not an expert in this area, but, but I will tell you that I know that the SREF requirements, the, um, you know, school requirements for educational facilities are, is woeingly out of date and has not kept pace with, um, with, um, really where it needs to be. It, it is something that really needs a, a group of experts to come together and make some recommendations to changing what SREF looks like to the legislators. So that's what this would be, is convening experts or task force. This is something that I think that, that facilities experts across the state have advocated for a while, but, but we would certainly, um, jump on board with that because it, it certainly does need to change. The other is, if you look at the next one, they're the industry standards for construction costs, you know, the, again, I, in my personal opinion, the, um, cost per square foot is already too low for us to build facilities that, to meet what we really need for our students. But then what contributes to that struggle that we have is that it doesn't also keep up with, um, you know, the cost increases that we've seen in the field. So that's an advocacy around, you know, increasing that over the past three, three years. It gives us more flexibility to build the facilities that we need for our students.
Are there any, Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, Dr. Atkins, um, how is that impacted by, um, I just lost my, I just lost my train of thought. Uh, give me a minute, sorry. Oh, how is that impacted by the, um, fact that we don't get the PICO funds? Or is it not?
Um, I think that, kind of looking at two different things. I mean, PICO dollars is just, you know, dollars that, that we, that we would receive to do capital projects, right?
Right.
This has to do with what the cap is from the state in terms of, this is what you should be building a classroom for, this is what the cost per student station should be. And so they set this cap, and, and if we're going to build one of our prototype high schools, it's going to exceed that cap right out of the, right out of the gate. Uh, and I don't think our, our prototype high school would be considered any Taj Mahal high school, particularly if you compare them to some of the ones that are built in some of our surrounding counties. So this is, this is just basically, you know, come on, we need to increase that, that cost per student station to keep up with the times. That, that's what that is.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Just like the SREF schedule, you know, keep up with the times.
We're saying that a lot today.
Okay, so next we have on the priorities, transportation, rewrite Florida statute 627.7233B and 627.7331A to clearly delineate that school buses operated by the county school boards are not subject to the requirement of obtaining personal injury protection insurance and that there has been no waiver or severance immunity for claims for reimbursement of paid PIP benefits by automobile insurance companies. Did we not have that last year?
Yes.
Is that one of ours from last year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to elaborate on that, or?
Well, uh, I would say that a, an attorney would be a better one to elaborate on this one, so, uh, Mr. Williams can certainly.
Welcome back, Mr. Williams, and congratulations.
Ah. Good afternoon, and, uh, thank you for the, um, congratulations on the new baby. Um, yes, this is a revisit to, um, the PIP law that was, uh, an issue for us last year. Uh, as some of you may recall, the Second DCA affirmed the lower court's, uh, decision in Lee County, which essentially, under Florida statute 627.7405, um, which allows for the right of reimbursement for personal injury protection benefits to insure, uh, in a, when a vehicle, commercial vehicle is, is operated or an accident occurs with respect to a commercial vehicle. Now, those PIP benefits are no-fault benefits, so they typically, uh, drivers are required to have those benefits, um, uh, per Florida statutes as well. And that's the issue in this particular matter, is that Florida statutes exempt, um, school districts from carrying personal injury protection benefits thereby, uh, which is something we don't carry. Granted, we are self-insured, however, we are specifically excluded from, um, that particular statute. So you have a couple statutes at play on this one. Again, 627.7405, which requires the right of reimbursement for these benefits, and then you also have 627.732, which defines a commercial vehicle. Uh, and essentially, a commercial vehicle is defined as any motor vehicle, which is not a private passenger motor vehicle. And prior to this, a school bus was specifically excluded from this. This was all revised, uh, several years ago, and it created the conflict. So, um, and if you go through the legislative history, the whole point of this, uh, excluding school districts from, uh, carrying personal injury protection was to limit their ability of that cost. Um, and so again, to defer costs. And it all comes back, um, with respect to these accidents and the sovereign immunity that's granted to, uh, public agencies. And so, uh, our, uh, our position is that our legislators need to go back and fix this, uh, because right now you have a lot of conflicting statutes which, um, try to reduce cost to school districts. This, um, as it's currently written, would actually increase cost to districts because we would now be required to carry, uh, insurance to protect against these claims, which we previously did not do. And, uh, my understanding is last, uh, last estimate that we received from, um, insurance was approximately be an additional $3 million to our school district. And again, this impacts all school districts across the state, so it's not just us. And several districts have actually reached out to us, um, you know, to support us in, in any efforts we make, and, and I'm sure Carol can comment on that as well. Um, but that's pretty much what we're at and what we're trying to do. And I know last year, uh, we had met with, um, some of the state representatives to try to kind of put that issue out on, on the forefront and, and get some support.
Thank you. Carol, did you have any questions?
No, I, I would just concur with what he said with, um, we did, uh, PIP, PIP is a very hot potato. Every year there's PIP legislation that, that comes forward. We did meet, um, with Mr. Rommel in Collier County, who this is in his wheelhouse, if you will, and we'll just continue to push in that direction because it is something that impacts all, I mean, it doesn't just impact us. So it's a statewide initiative that needs to be brought forward. Again, yes, just to remind everybody, but again, I'd just tell you, PIP, for as many years as I've been there, it's, it's always a hot potato.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions? I know that we were supposed to, uh, this was supposed to last 120 minutes, which is, in four more minutes it's supposed to be over. However, we still have, uh, comprehensive, um, health on this. And actually, I'm going to revert this to Ms. Fisher because I know this is her, um, right up her alley and very dear and near to her heart.
So I, I, I think it's, it's up a, a couple people's alley, and I do see Lori Brooks and Alicia Roy, uh, back there waiting to provide a little bit of more expert. But just in way of introduction, you know, um, health education is integral to the primary mission of schools, and it provides students with a continuum of learning experiences to develop the net, the knowledge and skills to become successful learners and health-literate adults. So it's the beginning of lifelong learning. The intent of comprehensive health education program is to motivate students to maintain and improve social, emotional, and physical health, prevent disease, and to avoid or reduce healthy risk behaviors. So I think that, um, you know, when we look at what the state has done recently in passing a few rules, uh, requiring mental health education, requiring substance abuse prevention education, and also, um, child trafficking information, uh, really, uh, comprehensive health education encompasses all that. And when it is a K-12 program, which, um, was cited as the Comprehensive Health Education Act of 1973, today comprehensive health education is required, K-12, through Section 1003.42 of the Florida statutes. So all, um, 50 states in the United States require health education in school. 20 of those states, um, use it as a requirement for graduation. Uh, we've been talking about this for years, and this board has been very supportive of that. And I think, uh, the timing is right for us to, uh, kick it up a notch and, and continue to ask. We did ask last year, and we're not funded, but we do have, uh, at least a semester of health education in our middle schools at this time. So, um, I'm going to, if I may, uh, ask for Alicia and/or Lori to come up and just give a little bit of overview about where we are now and how our priorities, um, that we're looking at today were arrived at.
Okay, can I ask, we have three proposals here, like, three different tiers of proposals? Is that what, um, that's what they're going to discuss?
And they can clarify that for us.
Thank you.
A lot better than I can.
Good afternoon, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Present some details. Uh, Ms. Fisher, I believe that you covered this comprehensively, and this is the same legislative agenda for this priority as we presented last year, and there seemed to be interest and support for it locally. We had three-tiered proposals to really, um, under Ms. Green's feedback, to really help give legislators some opportunity to look at different price tags attached to this so that we could, um, call what I like to, practice what I like to call relentless incrementalism, um, and really give them some opportunities to look maybe at tier three where we could, um, address grade eight. And if there was an appetite for, um, grade seven and eight, we could, uh, go there or six through eight. So it does provide a menu. And we did see, actually even without the funding, we did see some additional teacher certification movement in this area. So I'll turn it over to Alicia to talk through what we've noted for teacher certification.
Thank you.
And then Ms. Vaughn had a few questions about, um, concerns over whether or not we would be able to get certified teachers, um, to fill these positions. You know, right now we're fairly limited with just sixth grade as far as the number of positions that are available. And, um, right now, teachers are having to pay for their own health certification exams. But from FY19, uh, FY19 to FY20, we had 29 additional names of staff members, teachers, um, some administrators who added the health K through 12 certification endorsement. Um, I know several of the teachers who were teaching out of field have since added, um, since they began teaching health, uh, the beginning of last year. Um, you know, there, there is a lot of motivation when you know that there are positions. To say that we had 29 people either add the certification or moved into the district and held the certification, uh, says a lot considering, again, um, the limited number with just sixth grade right now. Um, we do have the option of, with sixth grade, you know, elementary certification can teach our peer counseling course, which is basically the same course, but expanded on and spread out over a year-long course versus a semester for a non-certified health instructor. Um, and that would give time for, for those teachers who did want to teach in this area to be able to get that certification. Um, I know Ms. Vaughn also mentioned, um, that in the past, PE teachers were encouraged to get health certification. Um, I'll keep my personal opinions about that aside, uh, other than to say that PE and health education are not the same thing. Um, and I don't think that that would apply when you're dealing with middle school. Uh, years ago, we had life management skills, which was a health course, and then a separate PE course. And the state decided to combine that into HOPE. And as a district, we went with the PE variation in most cases, and that really, um, kind of eliminated a lot of the health education. So I would not want to see that happen at the middle school level, nor do I think it would be functionally possible to have your middle school PE teachers also teaching health when they're two, two different, um, subjects. Um, Ms. Vaughn, I hope I answered your question on that, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you guys might have.
Okay, do, are there any questions? Ms. Vaughn?
I, I, Lisa, I, thank, thank you for answering that because I know at least in high school, there has been, um, an issue on, on the HOPE, and I do know that's translated into, um, middle school as well, because, uh, on the HOPE finding somebody to teach the, um, the health, uh, student.
Right, and I, and I think the goal of, of our, um, legislative priority is to have standalone health education courses where you have also your standalone physical education courses, because again, they are two completely different, I mean, yes, physical health is a component of health education, but, you know, like Dr. Atkins has said before, as a science teacher, even though he understands, you know, sex education, it's not something that he necessarily wanted to do in a middle school science class. So I think that.
Yes, we told Dr. Atkins stories about that.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Ethan.
So, um, I just want to thank you both for the work that you've done and the support that you've offered. And, and Carol, um, I know that, you know, we've talked with, uh, Senator Pasadomo, who was, uh, supportive, um, the last time we met, and I want to thank you for your encouragement with this. And I think that we just need to keep plugging along and hopefully at one point, we'll be able to get our kids the education that they need that will help them in so many ways, including with their academic achievement. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. So are we looking then, going forward, we're looking for the tier three one, is what our recommendation is, it sounded like?
Well, that was what we did last year, and, and we did, um, by the way, this board, and thank you all, we did, uh, pass policy 3.071, uh, regarding health education in this county, so that has helped us there. But I, I think maybe, um, we need, do we need to pick one on the screen of, or? Yes.
Or are we just saying, these are the options we would like?
Well, I think it's good to have all of the documentation, what I would, there's a couple of things I would ask. One, I would ask if we could, um, look at the numbers again and, and verify that, that they're still correct a year later. I'd like to see that.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Again, back to, uh, the comment that we started this meeting with, there is absolutely nothing that's going to happen in Tallahassee that isn't going to have a COVID piece to it.
Right.
Whether it's policy or budget.
Right.
Obviously COVID is, is, I, I read COVID in a lot of this stuff too.
Right.
Because of the, the mental health and substance use suicide, all of that stuff weighs into that. I would tell you that it is going to be in a tremendously difficult budget year. That being said, if we're managing our expectation with the fact
Miami is for sure.
Yeah, so I believe it's important to ask.
Yes.
I think it's important to put the ask out there. I believe it's important to have the opportunity to get the ask out there so that it can be discussed.
And so I don't know the actual amount of money that we in this district have gotten for the implementation of those rules that legislature passed, but I don't know if there could be some kind of a comparison or a way to illustrate how this encompasses that and maybe, you know, in the long run, more bang for your buck if the money were spent on this as a regular mandated class, which would give kids a much stronger background and skills to remain healthy and be more ready to learn.
The thing that's very interesting that you brought up already, which we've certainly talked about a lot, is that they piecemealed so much of this because a legislator will say, for instance, suicide prevention is really important to me, so I'm going to make sure that we go forward and do a suicide prevention class.
Human trafficking last year.
Human trafficking last year.
Right.
You know, we have, they piecemeal it so much that I think that our whole strategy is why are we doing that whenever we could roll these things together, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So that's.
And so, I mean, that could be part of what we do in educating our representatives.
And that's, we used that last year some too and people would kind of go, yeah, you know, that, you know, understand what you're saying.
Exactly. So Ms. Brooks, did you have a little bit more to add regarding the funding?
Sure, thank you. We did receive a one-time funding through the, through University of South Florida and our local SEDnet. It was under the umbrella of the Department of Education. Each district received that one-time allocation to support their implementation of the three State Board of Education rules. So we did use that to purchase our curriculum. And then this year, we were uncertain that we would receive it again. And under COVID-19, it was such an important priority and also that we have continuity of our curriculum, that we used the CARES Act funding to further purchase the next two years of that curriculum. So the challenge that we have is that when these three State Board of Education rules were passed for required instruction, part of the premise of that was, as you, I believe you alluded to it, Ms. Green, in comprehensive health education, districts are not lighting the world on fire by offering health. And so we are seeing the cherry picking of particular topics in K-12 education that they're now saying we need to cover every year, which we agree with. The challenge is where do we place that instruction? Because now we're placing it across the context of our school day and asking people to facilitate that instruction and those discussion points for students. So that was another piece to our platform last year, another rationale.
Right.
Is to be intentional about it.
And so, I mean, maybe we can put together something to illustrate some of that rationale. And what was our funding for this district, our one-time funding?
We received one-time funding in the amount of, oh goodness, I would have to get that to you, the exact dollar amount. Our curriculum purchase and onboarding and training was $168,000.
Oh, okay.
And it was a piece of a comprehensive plan we developed to support mental health education and awareness. And but part of that had to be how are we implementing the State Board of Education rules and intentional funding to support that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so Carol, do you believe that you have everything that you need? And so what would you recommend now for, as far as the priorities? Because we went through all of them, we have written down the different questions and comments, the tweaking, is there, is there something else that we should be doing right now as far as?
You know, I think this was really good airing of the questions and the comments and I know that Ms. Stillwell and we will be working to, you know, go through all of the notes that she's made and that we have made to come together with a new document. I mean, it doesn't sound like to me that there's anything that's on this document that she had originally sent out as a draft that's going to drop off.
Okay.
It seems like they're all important and some of them overlap a little bit, but they're all still very important with probably accountability right up there at the top of it, but I don't see anything that's going to drop.
Okay, and then once we have pulled all that together and then we'll determine what will be sent like to the FSBA and so we can do that collaboration with the entire state?
That's under your purview to do that. You know, once the draft comes out and once you all take your final act on that, then we will have an opportunity to just to share it.
So we can set up meetings.
We can set up meetings and get started with that.
Exactly.
Can't do until that's done.
And I think Ms. Brooks and Ms. Roy are going to get some updated numbers.
They'll get the updates for her.
Information to us.
Then are there any other questions from anyone?
Madam Chair, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Please.
So I'm thinking that the typical meeting that we would have with our local delegation at one of our schools would likely not be possible this year.
We're not doing that.
So I'm wondering if instead we should host something in the Cluj, Tahachi Room, where we give our local delegation an opportunity to sit in on a leave home connect classroom and go over our platform in a socially distant way.
Carol, do you want to, I know we had talked about how this year is going to be definitely different. Do you want to address?
We have talked about that and I have, and Ms. Patrica, I hadn't really thought about doing it in that, in that fashion. I need to think about that just a little bit. Obviously, trying to take anybody into a classroom is, I think Dr. Atkins is even going, we're not doing that. And I would agree with you completely because you're going to have a hard time getting them to do that. But at the same time, if, you know, let me think about that.
Well, if they were to see the home connect classroom virtually from the, you know, being here at the main office, they might get a feel for it. I mean, it would definitely be, if they could do the real thing, that would be amazing, but that's probably prohibitive.
Well, if we're giving, I think what you're saying is we're giving them an opportunity. We're going to set this up as an opportunity that they could have to understand better what your face was.
Okay, but in saying that, we would then offer that to all of those who are running then, correct?
No, this would happen after the election. It would be with our actual delegation and exactly what Ms. Fisher just said, not a physical visit to a classroom, but setting up a computer station, setting up computer stations across the room for the delegation to sit in on one of those leave home connect classrooms and see exactly what we have done, what the students faced, what the teachers faced, that kind of thing. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, no, thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Actually, I think that's a good idea to think about and maybe not a staged presentation, but you know, just having cameras in a room or something. But from the other perspective, I think it would be very interesting to somehow film a student who is at home doing home connect and how, what they see and how from that perspective of the student and their parent, as well as from the classroom perspective and the teacher, just a thought.
I don't disagree with anything that anyone's saying. I think it would be a, in a, you know, in a blue sky world, I think that would be great. Yeah, but here's, here's the reality of what we're faced with. The election's on November 3rd, so it's just a few weeks away. If we don't have results on November 3rd, which may be a couple of days later for local races, the other one I wouldn't even bet on, but it's going to, for the local races, it will be that way. So then you've got about a week before they head up to Tallahassee to be sworn in and then you've got about three weeks before it's in the holiday season and during that.
Committee weeks.
And committee weeks, you know, December's going to be.
They'll be on.
They'll be in Tallahassee. They're going to have to hire staff, they're going to have to set up offices, they're going to have themselves pulled in about 30 different directions. So I've got, I need to, again, I'm sorry, I need to think through that a little bit, but I think.
The logistics.
The logistic, exactly. The logistics of it become very cumbersome until we actually see when are these committee weeks going to be, what's going to, you know, so that we can kind of analyze that a little bit better. I like the idea and I think it's worthy of some thought, but I also understand the logistics and the reality of the tight timeframe between November 3rd, November 17th and then holiday time and all that.
Okay, so then can we just ask you to, you know, think about it and, you know, have that conversation and then let us know what you believe to be the best?
Sure, of course. And you know, and Representative Roach assured me that as soon as we had our platform put together, he would, he would be open to any meeting that we want and he would probably one that we could do that because he's very, very much embracing education.
Great, great. Well, we really appreciate you both being here and going through this with us today.
Of course.
And staff, we thank you so much for being here, all of you taking the time to sit here and listen to us and answer questions. Do we have good of the order, Ms. Javonelli?
I have none, thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
None, thank you.
I have none. Ms. Gittens?
No, thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
Nothing.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Okay, then being seen, we have none. Dr. Atkins, I'm so sorry.
No, I have none, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Prey Bruno?
None, thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. We'll see you back at 6:00.